Good evening and welcome. Happy New Year to everyone at home and everyone in the audience. And we welcome you back to our first regular scheduled meeting of Simsbury Board of Education. Today is January 8th, 2013. And with that, I call to order, we have some recognitions this evening.
Yes.
So, Aaron.
Turn things over to Aaron.
I will start. We have in the audience some students that worked on an unbelievable project two years ago. It was recognized at a gala event in Hartford almost exactly two years ago, January 15th, 2011. And it was a documentary that was developed by, in conjunction with Simsbury High School Students, Historical Society, and Simsbury Free Library. And created the documentary on Dr. Martin Luther King. And from that, working closely also with T.J. Donahue and others that really helped spearhead this project. And I understand that from that project, there has been new ideas that have been developed and an idea of a monument in Simsbury. And so, we have three students here today to talk to us about it. We have Maggie and Taylor Willerup, and we have Connor Lyman here today.
Great.
So, I welcome you and give you an opportunity so that you can tell the board about your new ideas.
Great. Go ahead.
First, right?
Well, thank you very much for taking the time to hear from us. As Mrs. Murray said, we have been working on a memorial project to commemorate Martin Luther King and his time in Simsbury. And really about how Simsbury had an impact on his early life, which influenced his later life and his involvement in the civil rights movement.
It did start with the documentary and the ideas that we were able to take from it. We tried to incorporate those ideas into elements of the memorial. So, each like element of the memorial has meaning behind it and there is like a reason for it. And we tried, we worked with a few artists to make sure that happened. And we really tried to pull like the most important, what we thought were the most important pieces of our documentary into this memorial so it can be enjoyed by everybody in the community. And it would be very beneficial because it would bring the community together as a place where everybody gathers. And we're hoping it would be a site of like unique and special. And it will also like help increase the tourism because it'll be a place where we can be like very present. And it'll mostly memorialize important pieces of history and help contribute to the community.
So, right now, our budget is $100,000. That's what we're looking to raise. We're about a third of the way there. We started with a $20,000 kickoff grant from Cigna when the documentary first came out. And now, we are trying to raise money. We're rolling out brick forms where people can buy a brick and put their family's name or something on that. And we are coordinating a benefit concert that will hopefully be taking place in February or March to raise some more money for this project as well.
And we have, in the past two years, we've had an event that showcases the documentary. And we have speakers share readings of Dr. King. And we're doing something similar this year. And we're going to present our memorial design, the memorial design, January 21st at 2:00 at the First Church in town.
Good.
Now, I see some poster board there. Is that the actual design or?
Yeah.
Sure. Show us so we can see them. Wow. Very impressive. Oh, that's beautiful.
Very neat. What a great cost.
Obviously, the amount of money that we raise in our budget or anything will possibly affect this, but this is our preliminary ideas and it is more of the general concept that we.
And the idea is to have it on the Historical Society's property. It's going to be where the red schoolhouse is right now. And that has a foundation above the ground, so it's been moved in the past and can be easily moved still. And we've been working with them to kind of specify how much area we'll be working with. So, this design is subject to change, but this, as Maggie said, is the general concept of what it will look like.
Okay. Can I ask you, is it a sundial? Is this?
Yes.
Is that it? What gave you the impetus to choose a sundial or work with an architect to construct a sundial?
Well, we, there obviously, the whole concept behind this was more to do a timeline of Martin Luther King and his impact on the degree, what impacted him to go and change the world. And so, the sundial in the middle was really to, the little plaques on there are specific themes and times. And the way it's constructed at that day and time, a few of sunlight will shine through and hit that. So.
That's very cool.
Yeah.
Very cool. That really is.
The elements that you spoke about are those when you said, "based on particular elements."
We have five glass panels that each showcase a different kind of major time in his life, including when he was here in town and then what he went on to do and his legacy. So, the idea was that you could like walk around and read from beginning to end. And they'll just have words from famous features of his or just words in general that he spoke that really signify.
Very nice.
And the interesting thing is that because he was here when he was just a teenager, this is really a memorial that unlike other memorials dedicated to Martin Luther King, really focuses on his early life.
Very nice. And very nice. Beautiful.
You worked and you take a great follow-up on the initial effort and the initial project. So, you are absolutely to be commended for those efforts. Great job.
Great. Very good. Thank you. Very nice. And we'll put a plug in. So, January 21st.
Yeah.
At First Church, you said? At 2:00 P.M.? And it will be a little.
It's a celebration of Martin Luther King's life. And it's put together by a group of townspeople. There are many people involved in the Martin Luther King Celebration Committee, which is separate from memorial. We're just a piece of their committee. And they put together a beautiful program every year.
Very good.
And we like to be part of it when we can.
Very good.
And I'm sure they'll hand out brick forms if anyone wanted to hand them out.
Very good. Absolutely.
Subtle.
And people listening who want to donate, what's the easiest mechanism?
MLK in Connecticut is the website.
NCT or?
MLKCT.
MLKCT.
MLKINCT.
Oh, it's MLKINCT.
MLK.
Dot com, right? Taylor?
In Connecticut, CT.com. And that is the website, official website. So, if anyone is interested in donating for a brick and what have you. Very good. Very good. And this service on the 21st is open to the public, I believe, right? Very good. 2:00 P.M. So, well, this is very good. Let's hope it won't snow and have a good showing that day. It'll be very, very nice.
Yes.
So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out and sharing with us this evening. I appreciate it.
That's great. Good, good, good. All righty. We are now on to, thank you very much. It was very nice of you to share with us the work that's going into all this. Very good. Thank you. There you go. And with that, we will move on to public audience. If anyone is in the audience willing, interested in addressing the Board of Education, please state your name and address. And seeing no one, we will move on to Boarded Administrative Communications. Kristin, welcome back. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. So, at the high school now, we're all getting back into the swing of things after vacation. And we have midterms in two weeks, so a lot of us are preparing for that. And then, on Friday, we have the Winter Wonderland Dance, which is raising money for the Trojan Wall. And I think we're trying to have half of the funds go to the senior class. And then, also on Friday, there's a fundraiser for Annie the Musical. And one of the students in it has to shave his head for the performance. So, they're shaving his head along with some of the faculty members. So, I think it's $5.
What about the superintendent? Might not grow bad. Just out of curiosity.
Well, okay.
I'm game.
As I look around, as I look around the board table here, I'm sorry, Kristin, go ahead. We just got a little carried away here at this.
So, you can pay $5 and then watch people get their head shaved.
I'm ready.
And then, that's pretty much it this week.
Good. Good. Very good. All right. And the dates for the Annie? Do you have those dates? Do they, do you know those dates?
The performance, I know it's February. I don't know the exact dates or now.
First two weekends in February. And anyone interested in purchasing tickets can contact?
I, yeah.
On the website. On the, of course, on the Simsbury High School website. So, very good. Good. Thank you. Susan.
Nothing tonight.
Tom.
Nothing. Nothing tonight.
Okay.
No, all right.
Go ahead.
It's been a while. Happy New Year. And we've had a rough, you know, the state has had just a horrendous month. And I just wanted to just say thank you to all the parents who give me some feedback that did so very, you know, very graciously. Also, I know that our faculty and staff has done a great job in terms of making sure that our students were, you know, in the best place that they could possibly be. And I know it's been hard on a lot of the faculty and a lot of the teachers, and I worry about them, to be quite honest. And I also think our principals in our administrative area did a great job with communications over the past three weeks. So, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Ted.
No, I mean, echo Tom, but nothing else.
No, same, but no further comments, no?
Nothing, Lydia. Nothing tonight, Lydia. Thanks.
Tara.
I do. I have a couple of things. I want to, I have some news around our Chinese program. Two really good things are happening. Shifan Theodora, who is one of our Chinese teachers, put in an application to participate in the 2013 Asia Society Confucius Classroom Teacher Institute in Los Angeles. And they selected 50 teachers from across the country, and Shifan was one of them that was selected. So, later in February, she'll be heading off to Los Angeles to participate. And what a great opportunity for her and to showcase the work that we're doing here in Simsbury. Likewise, Shifan's been very busy, and she submitted a video to Connecticut State, Central Connecticut State University with her Chinese teaching. And for the Chinese to celebrate the Chinese New Year, there's a at Wilti Hall Auditorium on the campus of Central Connecticut State University on January 28th, there's a program from 2:00 to 5:00 P.M. And they submitted a tape, and it was accepted, and they will have a performance on that day. So, lots of good work going on. And likewise, there'll be a trip to China with some students, a group of students in April. So, lots of, lots of good stuff happening in that program. Secondly, I attended a workshop today at the State Department of Education with the Math Content Cluster. They picked 20 people from across the state from, I was the only district representative, but there were also people from higher education, from classroom teachers, and trying to begin to build a platform for teachers and districts to use around the Common Core State standards. And Betsy Gonzalez was in the English Language Arts Content Cluster as well. So, lots of work. I'll keep you posted on that. Today was the first meeting that we had. More to come.
Great news about Shifan, always.
Yeah.
Nothing at this point.
Just one brief update for the Board. Going back a few months, we discussed the status of the Simsbury High School Project Audit and as part of the state grant process. And I'm just happy to report that shortly before Christmas, we did receive final word that the last payment of $451,140 was received that we had expected by the end of the year. So, that finalizes this process. And the nice thing for us is now we can get rid of most of the files. They've given us the official blessing. We've got a storage area of boxes and boxes of files that they've dealt with during those many years of the project.
Good. All right. It's a relief getting it. One box, two boxes, three boxes?
Many more.
Many more. Many more. Okay. I was being kind.
Yes. Just wanted to say Happy New Year to everybody. It has been a little while since we've gotten back together and share that yesterday, we sent a team of six individuals to a security symposium that was put on by the state of Connecticut, incredibly well-attended certainly in the aftermath of the events in Newtown. And I know that this evening, we're going to have an opportunity to talk about that a little bit and talk about some of the short-term measures and recommitments that the district has taken relative to our security protocols and the policies we have in place and some of the kind of long-term plans that we would propose and start to have a conversation about, which I think is extremely important. I also, Tom, wanted to thank our parents and our staff and everybody for the way that they handled themselves and handled things in the aftermath. I received a lot of feedback from parents, mostly positive about the communication, but really with some suggestions that brought to light things that we had thought about as well. And I think all those things will be considered as we look forward and make some plans into the future with our security protocols. I do want to give a special thanks to the Chief of Police, who I have met with on almost a daily basis, who has made his resources very, very available to us and increased police presence in town and a commitment to continue to do that as the resources allow themselves and avail themselves to us. And he just deserves, I think, a special thanks. And it actually has been a great experience for our administrators and I think our students to come in more, you know, contact with the police and see how they can impact our school communities in a very positive way as well. So, I just wanted to share that with you before we move on tonight.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. And I too would also like to have the opportunity and reiterate what my fellow Board members have also spoken about in administration. And I too personally, first of all, talk about speaking daily with Chief of Police since the tragedy in Newtown, really since 5:00 or 3:00 on the 14th, I've been in conversation with our superintendents. So, I would like to thank you on behalf of this Board for all you have done for this district and with your team of administrators and principals and teachers for the students of this community.
Thank you.
It has meant much to all of us, to the parents who send their children to our schools and to the staff and faculty and also to members of the community. So, heartfelt thank you for your undivided attention during this entire time. And I also in particularly would really like to thank with sincerest appreciation from the bottom of my heart to the staff and faculty of Simsbury Public Schools. When this incident didn't happen, I don't think there was one of us in this, in this state, in this country around the world that it hasn't affected. And every day, we thank our teachers for what they do, but I think more importantly, we value them for who they are, for what they do, why they've gotten to this profession. And I don't think there was one teacher that would not have done what the teachers and staff at Newtown had done for their students. So, again, we thank the staff and faculty. We value you tremendously more than you'll ever know in this district and I think in other districts. And it's because of you that, I think, I speak for my fellow Board members sitting around this table, that we are here because of you, for the passion that you have also gives us the passion to be here and continue doing the work that we know that you are doing for the students of this community. So, again, thank you and for all you are, who you are and what you do. During this whole entire process, I received, you know, many, many emails and phone calls and texts from many of our colleagues around the country, around the world. And, you know, there's just a, I think, the bottom line is that, you know, school districts, you know, may have different faces and colors and buildings, but at the end of the day, we are all there for one reason, for the students of this country. And that's something that we believe in. So, with that, we will move on to a new year, and we have many more challenges ahead of us. And we think of our colleagues there in Newtown. And, you know, we've also spoken to them, and we are there for them, and they know that. So, we will now move on to Recommended Actions. And with that, we are on Exhibit 1. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes of January, I mean, of December 11th.
December 2012.
2012.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We are now on to Exhibit 2 Personnel.
Yes, Lydia, thank you. I have one personnel recommendation for the Board's consideration this evening, and that's the retirement of Patricia Simon. Ms. Simon is an elementary teacher at Tooton Hills, and she's been with the Simsbury Public Schools for the past 25 years. She's requesting retirement effective June 30th of this year, 2013. So, tonight, I propose a motion that the Board of Ed accept the retirement of Patricia Simon effective June 30th, 2013.
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now on to Exhibit 3, Donation to Simsbury High School Robotics Team.
And I am going to turn this over to Burke Leclair to introduce a very generous gift from three different parties here to our robotics team.
Thank you, Matt. I'm pleased that this is becoming an annual event. We've got three corporate sponsors this evening. And while there's technically three different motions, we've got them together. And John C. Latwani is here as the advisor. And I believe it looks like we have Wayne Manchester from UTC present. That's a $5,000 donation. And Brian Child from Enson Bickford and Linda Horn from 4H University of Connecticut. So, this, in keeping with our gifts and donation policy, that Enson Bickford gift is $2,000. The 4H donation is $1,500. So, those would all be seeking your confirmation of those gifts. And I'd give John C. a chance to make any comments that she'd like to make.
Yeah. I'd like to just recognize that everybody here that we have, Wayne, Brian, and Linda have all given their support, not only financially, but also especially with Wayne and with Brian and all the hours that they've done as mentors for. Our sponsors have not just been people that have donated money, but they've donated time and their expertise for the students. And that has been so valuable to us. And as we're in our third year, we've had, UTC has been our sponsor for three years, our major sponsor. And 4H with Dr. Horn has been our sponsor for three years.
That's great.
And Enson Bickford for three years. But Brian has been with us for three years. Once they get the bug, they seem to stay with us. And so, we hope that that continues. And so, I just really want to recognize, and I know Wayne's been with us, and I think that he's probably second to me as the most hours that have been put into that and first. So, he's always been very dependable. And Brian's starting to add those hours up too for us. And with Dr. Horn, her husband, and she also has been involved with First Robotics at Saffield, ASF, for years. Long time. So, she's been, she's been here to help us as far as mentoring myself also, just experiencing what to expect and how to set things up. So, I'll take all of them. I don't know if any of them have anything you'd like to say.
Incorporate it into your hearing classes as soon as possible to help our team.
It's just a wonderful overall program that the students all can learn something new. They may not become engineers, but they're incorporating all that they're learning in robotics with their school classes as well. Some of them are just discovering that connection and that maybe school science or math or, you know, something along those lines might not be so bad after all. And it may open up some new ideas for career possibilities for them as well. So, it's just a fabulous program, all that's involved, whether they're doing the building and the engineering and the programming, or they're doing the business aspect of the team. They're all learning some valuable skills.
Good. Good. And I'm going to ask Brian Child, who I seem to know very well from many, many years and when he started at Lattimer Lane in Simsbury. So, we do go back. So, welcome back, Brian. And so, maybe you can talk to us a little bit about, I know you always had an interest in robotics. I think I even came when you were a senior in high school to the robotics conference or convention in high school. So, we welcome you back. So, maybe you can tell us a little bit about your continued interest in the robotics team.
I've always had an obvious interest in engineering. And Simsbury High School started to develop those engineering classes pretty much as I was getting to the end of my career in high school. And it's just incredible to see how far it's come since I left high school, how far the, the fact that we actually have a First Robotics Team that's stepping up and really getting so incredibly well involved. The kids and what they can do is just, it's my.
Great.
Good.
I'd just like to thank you all for both your financial and your time commitment, which is equally as impressive in the busyness that everybody has.
It's not worth it.
It's right. Thank you very much. Greatly appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anytime you'd like to. Starting next week, we'll be there every night at the high school. We're trying to throw frisbees and climb a 10-foot structure. We've got to find a place to build a 10-foot structure, but anyways. You're welcome to come by anytime. And of course, we have our, we go to regional, we'll let you know when that is, and our headquarters.
John C., when do you typically meet?
We meet from 4:30 to 8:00 each week. And then, Saturdays, it'll start 8:30 to 2:30 next weekend at the Saturday. For now, we've got a small schedule, only Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday until 12:30.
Very good.
For six weeks. It's intense, but it's.
How many students participate? How many students participate?
Well, we've had this year, we've seen up to about 60 kids coming in and out. But we'll see. It seems like we have more than I'm going to say a core, but we have, when I've been looking at the records, about 46 kids.
That's awesome.
That's great.
That's great. Thank you.
That's good. Good. Thank you. Thank you for coming back, Brian. You're welcome anytime.
Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I make a motion, we accept.
Move.
I make a motion, we, the gift of $5,000 to the First Robotics Team at Simsbury High School from United Technologies be approved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor on that first motion?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I move that the proposed gift of $2,000 to the First Robotics Team at Simsbury High School from the Enson Bickford Aerospace and Defense Company be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you.
Move that the proposed gift of $1,500 to the First Robotics Team at Simsbury High School by the 4H University of Connecticut be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank the actions as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great program.
That's amazing. Very nice. Very nice. We're up to 60 students this year, I believe. So, it's really grown in the past several years. We are on to Exhibit 4, Adoption of Naming Rights Policy.
So, essentially, the naming rights policy is up for a motion this evening and a vote for approval. We've brought it before the Board on two occasions.
Yes, we have.
And it hasn't changed, right? I mean, like I'm reading it again, yet again, the third time. I don't see any changes.
No.
There's been no feedback at this point, so.
So.
So, move that the Board adopt the naming rights policy, number 3512, effective January[1704.75] number 3512, effective January 9th, 2013.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, since this is the night that we will move this. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Now we are on to our, and thank you very much for Policy Committee. Now, this was quite a bit of work that you have put into this, and thank you for bringing this forward, as you do with all our policies, and revising and reviewing them. We are now on to Information and Reports on Exhibit Five. And Dr., Mr. Curtis, we will have Security Audit Update.
Great. So Sue has put together, we've obviously had quite a bit of discussion about our current policies. One of the first things we did as a district following the incident was to bring our internal crisis team together and talk about some immediate steps, or what we're calling immediate recommitments we can make with the policies that we have in place and the systems we have in place now to ensure the safest environment we can for our kids. And Sue is going to talk about those. And then she's also going to talk about the scope of an audit that we would like to put together to really receive some quality feedback from an outside consultant in two areas, policies and procedures, but also our physical plant and the layout of our facilities. And I think that will really help us tremendously from a planning standpoint, and also probably a capital improvement conversation as we move forward. So I'm going to turn things on to, over to Sue, and I'm sure we'll have some questions and can go from there.
Great. Thank you, Matt. So as Matt shared, very soon after the tragedy in Newtown, our district crisis team convened together here in this very, very room. And with the addition of the Chief of Police, the Fire Marshal, as well as First Select Woman, Mary Glassman. So it was great to get their input and response as well to this. And from that specific meeting, the first thing I'd like to talk about this evening are the recommitments that we made to the safety practices. So there is a small PowerPoint that you can follow along with. Of course, much more detail is in the actual proposal, which is included in your materials this evening. But as far as those recommitments to safe practices, one of the first things we wanted to make certain of is that we were locking all of the exterior doors while school was in session. That was very important for us, just as a double and triple check to do that, with the exception, of course, of our main entrances. But we would also recommit to a consistent visitor protocol when people were entering the building, so that we had consistent language, which of course greeted them, but then asked them, you know, why they were actually coming to any said building, and then to report to the main office to check in and to follow our visitor procedures. In addition to that, we recommitted ourselves to faculty badge adornment and making sure that we were identifiable through our badges at all times. That was very important. We also took a look once again at our code red procedures. Our schools have been doing drills over the course of the year, but it was important for us to look at those with a new eye and to update them, not so much in practice, but, you know, there's some language around using a fax, and we could update those things with the new technologies that we would use. So we made sure that we did that as well. We're also in the process of conducting a door lock survey to determine how our door mechanisms actually work and any improvements that we can make to that. We started on that right away, because that's not something that we really need to add into the scope of an audit that we would do. That's something that certainly we can do with existing personnel and resources to actually conduct that survey. So that is underway right now.
Sue, I would just, not to jump in, but that's one area I just, and we'll probably touch on it again later on, that we've received a lot of feedback from our own teachers. That's important to them, is that one of the things that they need to do right now in a code red drill, in many instances, is step out into the hallway and lock the door from the exterior. That's been brought to us over past years as well. It makes them uncomfortable. I can share that honestly with you. And that's a priority area that we'd really like to take a look at in the immediate protection of the students in the classroom and the teacher.
Absolutely. Thank you, Matt. Now, from that, and this is information and steps that actually were validated yesterday at the Safety Symposium. We'll talk more about that. But it's the whole concept of a third-party assessment. You know, certainly, we bring knowledge of our practices and knowledge of our buildings. We've also been, as Matt had shared, in very tight collaboration and consultation with both Simsbury Police and Simsbury Fire. But it's always a good idea to get a new look on these practices. And so this is the proposal for you this evening as the Board of Education. So what we would be doing is seeking consultants, and we would be doing this in collaboration with the Simsbury Police Department. They've been fantastic about doing some initial examining, some initial study. And they'll be getting back to us with possible consultants that would fit the frame of the work that we're asking them to do and the scope of the work that we're asking them to do. And to get into a little more detail, we would be asking that agency to complete a full review of our safety protocols, but also our physical plants, our layout of the buildings. That level of detail, again, is in your proposal, but we would be asking them to look at things like the footprints of the building. What do traffic patterns look like? Where might there be vulnerabilities? And to give us a list of recommendations with priorities and attached estimated cost to what those would be. But this survey would really be an all-hazards approach. So by that, I mean certainly looking at the code red procedures, but also, you know, if there is any biochemical issues, natural disasters. And that is what, again, was validated and recommended at the Safety Symposium yesterday, this all-hazards approach. And we would also, as a part of that, which is so important, you know, Tom, you had mentioned this before, the importance of soliciting the feedback from all of our stakeholders. And we've gotten some phenomenal ideas from our parent community, from our teacher community, from other members in our community. And we would want the agency that we would select to provide multiple opportunities for stakeholders to provide that feedback. So that is also an important part of this plan. Again, definitely prioritized recommendations with costs is important to us. You know, if we are going to be dedicating time and resources, what would be the recommendations for those? And during this process of this assessment, we would ask them for mid-assessment updates to Matt that we could bring to the Board, but ultimately, a final report that would come to the Board of Education for review.
One of the things in the Symposium yesterday that really stuck with me was, there was a section where they talked about physical plants and talked about things to think about in layouts of facilities. And it was really about kind of new construction. But what it did talk about and bring back my thoughts to when I was the Principal of Squadron Line was the importance of the front office location in facilities. That locking exterior doors is important. Surveillance equipment is important, but there is no substitute for visualized and awareness of people being able to see any kind of approaching danger. That, if you'll remember years ago, I think during the time Aaron was Principal at Henry James, I was at Squadron Line. We were asked to kind of take a look at our current facilities and prioritize and put some proposals forward about front office location. Some of those projects are, they're on the capital improvement list now, and they've kind of been shuffled around over the years. So I know we're going to have an opportunity to talk a little bit about that today. We've kept projects where they are for the sake of conversation. But those priorities we thought of four or five years ago are still very important priorities now in terms of best practices and things for us to, I think, think about for years to come. So I just, you know, as Sue said, you know, it was reaffirming some of the things to think about. But for me, that somebody has some history in the district, as Aaron does, that we've had some of these conversations before. And now may be a time to really put, you know, some priorities or some timeframes to some of these concepts.
So just to give you a timeline of what we're thinking, you know, again, we're getting names and contacts through the Simsbury Police Department of possible consultants. And we'll be making contact with them within the next couple of days, quite frankly, to see if their services match the scope of the work that we would like to have done, both from the safety practices side and the review of those practices and protocols, and also of the physical plant. You know, it may be that one agency specifies and more practices than they do physical plant. So maybe we look at, looking at two agencies. I mean, we really want the scope of work to be addressed through the specialties of these consulting firms. So pending selection, we would hope that such a study would start March 1st. That would be the commencement date with a mid-study update about April 1st, with the work concluding at the end of April for a Board of Ed report.
I imagine these agencies will be inundated in short order if this was one of the recommendations out of that Symposium.
It's a challenge we talked about the other day, so.
There's two elements of that. So, you know, agencies that are inundated, but also agencies that are popping up in response to this. So we want to be very careful consumers of their services and look to people that have standing reputations for this type of work.
Right.
And we got some good resources yesterday, which I'll also share with you. So I just, I do want to highlight a couple of aspects of the Safety Symposium that we attended yesterday. Again, as Matt had shared, it was a team comprised of Simsbury Public Schools employees, our Steve Twitchell, our head of Buildings and Grounds and Maintenance, a representative from the Simsbury Police Department, Fire Marshal Kowalski. So it was a great team, again, having eyes on it. And it was nice to see the collaboration, not just at our table, but from the other towns as well, attending the Safety Symposium. They talked at length about prevention measures and having this third-party assessment completed as a prevention measure to look at the gaps that we currently have in practice, and then a plan moving forward. And that's exactly what we plan to do through this Safety and Security Audit. They also continued to emphasize the whole concept of school climate and culture, and how important that is. And just a couple of months ago, before my leave, I know that I came before you and talked about our school climate efforts specific to, of course, bullying, but overlooking at climate overall and how important that is for us to address across our school, across our district. And they, again, just reemphasized that point for us, that making those connections with students on a daily basis so that students feel well-known, that they have a place, is paramount in this. And again, I think it just validated the good work that is occurring across the district. They also shared with us some resources that are available on a national level and some access to those resources. So again, we will be taking a look at those and seeing how we can best utilize those resources in our next steps moving forward as a district. They also emphasized the continuous fostering of community relationships within our communities and across our communities. You know, most certainly, we have done that with the police, with fire, with our social services agencies. We continue to foster those relationships. I know that Burke also had the opportunity to speak with other districts about collaborating efforts. Burke, I don't know if you want to say something about that quickly?
Yeah, just a comment that there's an educational resource collaborative ERC. You may have heard that business managers meet regularly, talented within the Farmington Valley. Sometimes the superintendents join us also. So we have a, we actually have a safety services bid that we've done and renewed recently. And I've talked to some of my colleagues and see this as a sort of natural area that we can, that we can work regionally on. Each building in each district will have to have its own particular sites, but there are some things that we have in common. So that's something that we'll be pursuing.
Thank you. And just finally, the importance of reviewing all of our practices and procedures. You know, clearly doing a full review of them every five years, but to keep that current, to make sure that they actually reflect our practices or any changes that we want to make in our practices to enhance the security for our students and the safety of our students in our community. So that's what we would be looking to do through this proposal. I welcome any comments or questions that you might have at this time.
I have a couple of questions, actually.
Sure.
In reading the materials, it says that a consultant will review the code red procedures. Do they actually come in and witness code red to see that the procedures are being followed?
So we absolutely could examine that possibility, Todd. Currently, just to share with you, currently, each school is responsible to run a code red drill twice during the year. And we do that in collaboration with the Simsbury Police Department. So the Simsbury Police actually come up. They watch our code red procedures, our drills being done, and they provide us feedback on that. And our feedback has been really positive about that. So, but that is certainly something that we could ensure that this consulting firm would do, so that they could see that, again, from a different perspective.
Second question is, when they deliver the results.
Yes.
You don't kind of hide stuff from the public, but to the extent that there are vulnerabilities, you don't want to broadcast them. So how are the results communicated back to us without kind of alerting people to, you know, the holes in the system?
I think that, you know, certainly, the recommendations will be generalized to not compromise the security of our practices and protocols. Right? Because then if we're going to, and there was actually some discussion about that yesterday with, you know, what do you publicize? How much do you publicize? Because when do you compromise the security of those practices? So they will be written, you know, specifically, but not compromising the security of our practices for our students and faculty and community.
Sue, I have a question.
Yes, Tom.
You know, I mean, I appreciate the prioritization, recommendation, and estimated cost. And to me, that sounds like a very, you know, broad set of, you know, review and guidelines. But I mean, some of the things that you hear on the radio and TV are quite extreme. And either, and is there anything that it's kind of, that you kind of already have ruled, I don't want to say ruled out, or, you know, is off the, I mean, like, it's off the table, if you will, from a recommendations perspective? I mean, because literally, you hear about, you know, metal detectors and, you know, people, I mean, you know, some stuff that, you know, immediate reactions to a crisis, right? And I think the timing that's laid out here is excellent. But I think that, you know, I just was trying to get a sense of, do you have a kind of this recommendation and estimated cost? Do you have a sense of scope, if you will, in terms of how extreme are we going to get from a security perspective? Because, you know, going to the airport today, that's one level of security, right? And what we do today in our school system is another level of security, for all good reasons, but, you know.
The topics that came up in the conversation around, you know, mitigation and prevention via this Symposium, I would not call extreme.
That's correct.
You know, there was definite conversation about elements of hardening buildings a little bit and things I think we can do differently. And I think we can share kind of our perspective with this consultant as we move forward and talk. But I wouldn't say we've come into this saying absolutely not to these three characteristics. I think it's important to see what is being defined as best practice. And I think, large scale, you haven't seen some of those things being employed as best practice. It's interesting to see what, you know, kind of comes up in the papers and the conversations that people, you know, are having. And I think it's important, and they pointed this out at the Symposium, is when an event like this happens, it certainly raises everybody's awareness, and you want to move forward and make plans, but you can't be reactionary to the point that you are responding to the actual incident that took place, because every one of these tragic incidents is different. And we just need to keep in mind the best practices that are out there. That's why we want to go to the professionals. And then I think we can have conversations about how our community views those things and then how you view those things as a Board of Ed with our, with our feedback.
Absolutely. Any questions?
You know, I think it's the right thing to do. We've got to do this study, and I think the audit's a great idea. I will tell you, I'm a skeptic when I listen to what the audit's talking about and think about what actually occurred in Newtown. I'm not quite getting the connection of some of the things we're doing here and how they might have changed the outcome in Newtown. I don't really see any connection there. You know, what do you do to stop a nut with a gun in this audit? So I think one of the questions I would want the audit to consider is, you know, what's our response? What's the Board's and the district's response to that? If somebody comes in and starts shooting, what's our expected response to that? Is our response simply call the police and wait and do what we can to protect the people, the occupants of the school? Or is that best practices? I don't know. It seems, and Tom mentioned, I fly a lot, as I'm sure a lot of people do. You can't, certainly can't get on an airplane with a weapon, but you can walk into a school with one. And I don't quite, I'm having a lot of trouble with that.
If I could offer just one.
So I'm not trying to, not trying to get to any conclusions.
No, I understand.
I'd just like that question to be asked. Are we saying that there's nothing we can do if the proverbial nut with a gun comes into a school, except lock the doors and hope for the best and count the minutes that go by?
I think a lot of the Symposium was about response, to be honest. And I think one superintendent did bring up the question that he feels is out there in many communities about, do we do something from a personnel standpoint? And does that lens or that standpoint include arming somebody? And I think that conversation, if that's one we need to have, I think what we need to consider are really two things. And this is just my personal opinion at this point, is there's two ways to look at that scenario.
at this point, is there's two ways to look at that scenario. One, quite honestly, are security-type individuals. The other is a collaborative relationship somehow with the police department. And I can tell you, my initial response to those two things, without further exploration, is that I think the police department has a national model, a resource officer model, that's been very successful, that they talked about at this symposium, where people are trained on how to work in schools, are trained on how to interact with kids and faculties. And if we are looking to at all have conversation about, and this isn't a recommendation at this point, but, you know, conversation about resources, I would certainly feel more comfortable with that venue as a resource and a collaborative in terms of adding community value than simply security people that would stand at a front door potentially.
I'm completely with you on that. You know, we, we have 38 or something police officers who are well-trained to protect and serve the citizens of this town. And it would seem logical that the thing we'd really want them to protect are our youngest citizens in the town. So...
We have a community, police, you know, we have a liaison in the schools as it is, you know, a resource officer, and that's towards community, too.
But not full-time.
No.
Full-time at the high school.
Full-time at the high school.
Full-time at the high school, had one at one time at the, at the middle school. So, you know, whether it would be a larger conversation of what costs are there, this is all certainly research we could do, you know, readily and bring it back. You know, whether it would be an addition at a middle school, or in one additional at the elementary, because I think what our community has appreciated, and the feedback I've gotten, is the concept of increased police presence, not necessarily standing somebody there all the time, but the fact that officers have stopped into buildings, have talked to principals, have toured the buildings, have been more familiar with our physical plants. It's been well-received by both parties. But when we talk about, I guess, outside of hardening buildings, Mike, in response time, that would be the next topic to talk about.
Right. You know, I'm, as much as anybody, aware of the budget implications. You know, I just wanted to make sure that the audit does consider this question. You know, the, look, I'm all in favor of everything else you listed, but I just, is it going far enough? Are we doing everything we can? I think that's the answer that our parents expect us to, to come up with. And, you know, when we ran the numbers shortly, if you, if you put full-time resource officers in every school, it's like $400 and something thousand dollars out of a $63 million budget. So something less than 1% of the budget. So I think that's a, from a budget priority and a financial question. If you said to me, you know what? Let's do that starting tomorrow, I would vote for that in a second. And let the audit play out, and if we want to change it as time goes by, that's fine. But, you know, it seems to me that the, that parents in the community expect us to do what we reasonably can, take reasonable steps to do everything we can to protect the, our youngest members of our community. And that would seem like an easy and natural response. So.
Well noted, Mike. I'll make sure that it's...
Let's keep going. I'm completely on board with doing the audit.
And I think yesterday, after attending this, and I will share with you, there was a lot of great material. The presenters that did come, came from the Safe School Center in Kentucky, and also from Miami Police Training Centers. You did have quite, quite a varied group of panelists and presenters from around the country that have been involved in, in a lot of these particular, you know, incident, incident management, incident situations over the years. So there are websites that I will share with you, where you can also, you know, find further information on their PowerPoints and presentation. And this was very well-attended. There were probably about 1,000 attendees that were there, from, from board members to superintendents to chief of police and so on. It was put together within two weeks or so, you know, to, to offer this. But, but again, Mike and the others, a lot of the questions that we have as board members are also questions that we have been hearing from board members around the state on the same type of issues, same type of situations. Many boards are also going to be competing for the same consultants that we're looking for, too, in audits, because they're all going to be looking and asking the same questions. So we have 161 school districts, you know, in this state, and, and not one of them is not looking at preventive measures. And as you were mentioning, Sue, in the prevention and mitigation mode and response mode. So a lot of this is something, it's all very new territory for us, but it was very enlightening to hear from, from these experts around the country in, in how we move forward with this. So these are, these are all very good points, and we'll continue.
Any additional questions?
That would be an easy addition to the scope.
Absolutely.
Did they mention if they, if there's any expectation of any kind of new state or legal requirements as far as?
Do you know what, Todd? That was actually touched upon, and it's kind of the to-be-continued. We'll see. There is a commission that has been put together by Governor Malloy with...
It was just named today. I put an article in your folder about it.
That's correct. So you have information on that commission? What recommendations? They're yet to be seen. But it's something that we'll be keeping a close eye on. So to that point, I will be incorporating your questions into the scope, and I will be updating you as this important work progresses. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Sue. Very good. All righty. Any further questions on this? This was very informative and...
Very comprehensive, so quickly. Thank you.
You're welcome. All righty. We are now moving on to Exhibit 7 and our Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Six, Exhibit 6.
So this is a segue to your budget binders on your book, on your table here.
It's that time of year. The table starts getting crowded.
Starting with just a few tabs, and one of the tabs you'll see, second one back is the Six-Year CIP. So I would invite you to open that tab up. And as a reminder, since we last met, the major difference, differences are, first, the format. We just, we just returned it to the, sort of the Town of Simsbury format for consistency purposes. And the other new item on this list is the Improved School Security Measures placeholder. And the timing on this was that we agreed after your December meeting to get back with the Town staff and the first selectmen. And we did meet to compare our, sort of, roll, roll-forward lists of what had been previously discussed. And the timing was that that was just after this event at Newtown. We added this placeholder here. We did not push out any of the sort of middle, middle-year projects. We've not yet made any suggested changes to those. So for the next fiscal year, 1314, that the voters would be potentially asked to vote on, the only project that we previously had was the Squadron Line Boiler Replacement Project. So you still see that in FY 201314 for $900,000 is our current estimate. Given that the charter changed the timeline for the capital budget process, we technically have till mid-February. But even with that timeline, we know that we would not have a full audit recommendations and cost estimates. But one thing that we certainly can do is, we can look at, at those things that are more clearly known and give you some cost estimates on, for example, what it would cost to replace locks on the classroom doors. We can, go ahead, Matt.
You go ahead.
Comment. That, that is something that we could do. In our, in our meeting with, with Town staff, one of the other conversations we had was, given the time constraints for the regular budget process, there's also the possibility of, of going back after the audit is completed and possibly, you know, having conversation about a special town meeting to, to, to look at funding. Another, another timeline was, this all happened right before Christmas. There was a Board of Finance meeting, and the Board of Finance had expressed to us their interest and willingness in helping out in terms of funding. And I explained that this audit was our, you know, was our next step, and that we would be getting back to them once, you know, once we had more information. So I think we have a, a lot of willing partners in this conversation.
Okay. What's the, I'm sorry, go ahead, Burke.
And I was going to point out, while we're talking about the theme of security, for some of our projects in the out-years, the Henry James renovation project and the Squadron Line Main Office project, they each had a security element involving the front office. In fact, the Squadron Line project was primarily about that, whereas that was just one element of the renovation project for Henry James with science classrooms and library media center. So that's something that we can certainly, you know, ask our architects to, you know, to help and/or security consultant. I think it would be a natural to say, you know, give us your input in particular on those two buildings, as they look at all of our buildings.
Burke, have these, so this, just picking on, picking out Henry James. Has, is that the cash flow number that we're talking about? I mean, if you looked at the Board of Finance, they told you that that never's going to fit with their guidelines.
This is just, this is not a, this is not a cash flow number. The purpose of our, our meeting at the staff level, and we know that we'll have to have follow-up meetings here in the next several weeks, was to say, what are the priorities for that first year, knowing that we had about $1.8 million in, in new project room within the 7%? And then started to, to talk about cash flow. And that's something that the Finance Director, Treasurer is continuing to work on. So we don't have that document here for you, for you tonight. This is just project.
So this is an estimate of...
These are just cost estimates, some of which are still being reviewed. So at your next board meeting, you know, any adjustments to those cost estimates, we would, we would highlight and, and bring forward.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought the Board of Finance wanted, especially on a project like Henry James, cash flow, to see how you could marry that into the rolling off, stuff coming rolling off now.
Correct.
So we don't, we don't have that level of detail yet, right?
We have started those conversations. We have, you know, we have a sense of how, like, that type of project would, would flow. But you also have to mesh it with cash flow of the Town project. So we don't have their revisions yet. We did talk about, you know, what was some of the roll-forward items that, that were on their list for 14 and beyond.
We do know for 14, it's 1.8 million dollar.
Correct.
Cash flow that puts it within the 7% total.
And there are projects in excess of that between, you know, Town and Board of Ed. I think we read in the paper about the, the grant relative to the Ethel Walker purchase. There's the charade. I know there's several, you know, several, several projects. At least there's some smaller, smaller, I think, roof projects and...
When does the high school roll off? Is it finally done?
I think it starts to really impact in the 1415 and 1516. It's kind of those, it's one of those two, one of those two years.
And Burke, the network infrastructure, the first one on there, it says estimated cost $2.6 million. Wasn't that the last? That was the one that we just did, right?
So... What that...
Just want to make sure I'm understanding this.
Yeah. It was, I think what it, I think that may be the prior year, 1.8 plus these two. That might be an error in summarizing. We've, we've taken off the old year and added that, added that new year.
Okay.
Very good question.
Burke, maybe I missed it when you started talking about it, but did you say you had a number for the Improved School Security Measures as a placeholder? Did you have any idea?
We did not put a number down for the scope of, you know, of all the possible hardening in all of the buildings. We do have a sense of what just the, the door locks would, would be for, you know, 260 classrooms that don't have that ability to lock from the inside.
As you know, I've been involved in operating buildings which are open to the public all my life. And when you start changing door locks on that number, you're in hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yes, you are.
So the, you know, but it strikes me, we're supposed to approve at our next meeting, we're supposed to approve this. So what's the thinking for a number? Are we going to put a $2 million in there as a placeholder to take to Finance or Board of Finance? Or what do you think?
I guess that's part of our conversation tonight. I mean, we, you know, we, we don't have a crystal ball yet. We know what we can put down for, you know, locks and have, you know, maybe a sub-project that's, you know, that's defined. But then again, you know, as we, as we stated earlier, do you, you know, do you have any interest in doing something before the, you know, before the budget process is, is over versus after?
You're not going to have hard numbers. That, that gets voted on the 15th of February, right? So that's our deadline for submission to the board.
Right, right. Submission, yes.
So we're not going to have anything from the audit, certainly.
Right. That's, that's what, that's what we're saying, is either the, either you have some comfort level to, to, to consider, you know, with, with the other boards asking about the possibility of a special meeting to come back, or you try to determine that there is some threshold or number that you think needs to be put in as a placeholder, you know, up to amount.
Those other renovations that you were talking about that had some of the, you know, improvements and security improvements, is there any sense of how much those improvements were? I mean, can we get a, I mean, even a wild, you know, wild guess, even, you know, pulling that out of it, pulling out of the total renovation cost, what portion was for security and...
When you look at Squadron, essentially, just to take a look at that school, that whole project was security-based, because the nurse's office is actually at the front, if you know, when you walk in. And the, so it's a flip, essentially, is what the initial planning was, to get the front office visibility in the front. So that whole project scope was built around that. I mean, I can't recall, we'd have to go back and really look at the details, and I know we'd have to brush up on that certainly, but that project in its entirety was security-based, in terms of its rationale and why we brought it forward. Henry James, the front office portion of that, you could look at.
Well, we can't, well, we can't control without conversation and input from the fire marshals and others, is, well, can you really separate that from some of the sprinkler aspects, the safety aspects of that?
Larger project.
We can certainly get that, you know, get that number as to, you know, what are the portions that just related to moving the, the front office and, and report back on that. But it just goes back to that, to the question of, is that, you know, is that what you want to do? Do you want to phase it? Do you want to consider that? Or do you want to do it as part of the entire project?
Seems to me we've got something close to a million square feet of buildings. Is that right? Is that off the top of my head?
Sure.
I think a little bit less, but yeah, close to that, yeah.
High school's $300,000. So five elementary schools and one middle school, just off the top of my head. It seems that...
Real close to that.
So if you wanted to use a budget number of some dollars per square foot, you know, even, even $5 per square foot comes out to $5 million bucks, so, which is pretty low, you know, in the scheme of things. You know, I'd be inclined to put in, you know, a placeholder of a couple million bucks or something. You know, what we don't want to have, what we don't want to be faced with is recommendations from the audit that we have no way to pay to. So, you know.
Mike, let me ask you a question. So that's a guess, and it's an educated guess. I'm not, I'm not in any way going to get your experience. But that, to me, is almost a special project. I mean, you're going to go to the Town like you did on the high school, like we did on certain other things. Other than trying to meld that into a budget this year and next year and the next year, I'd almost be more inclined to say, here's our bigger plan. And it's going to cost money, and it may cost five, it may cost 10. I mean, I don't know the numbers, right? Your number's as good as I can start with.
It's entirely a guess.
Right. I mean, that's why I would be uncomfortable just throwing a number out there, saying, here's what I'm going to go to.
Is that the mechanism, though, that's been done in the past? Literally, we'll put a proposal together, say it's $3, $4 million, it involves people and plant and equipment, and literally we'll go to the Town and say, here's the...
Be like the high school project. I mean, the high school went as a separate vote.
Because it could not fit within the...
Is there a dollar threshold where that's?
$2 million.
$2 million?
Yeah.
2%.
2%?
It's 2% of the, which, which is about $2 million right, right now. A little bit, little bit less.
My other thought is, I'm a little concerned that if you do this audit, if, when it gets done, they may say things that we don't agree with, but now that it's audited out there, that now becomes a benchmark that people may say, well, you should be doing that. So to simply throw a number as good as an educated number as yours is, I'm uncomfortable that that's just going to become a false target, that it's only going to cost us $2 million bucks. It's only going to cost us this, when, if it comes back at, you really should be spending 10. Now where are we?
Well, I guess the way I would look at it is, if we put in, I'd say, put a placeholder of $2 million, and we came back with recommendations for five, the two would be sort of a down payment on that program, and we'd have to go back for the additional three at some point, you know.
Which might be good, but I don't, I mean, that's sort of escrow on the money now. I don't, I don't know if we can do that, you know what I mean? As opposed to an all-in, here's the project, here's the number. It goes to the Town as an all-in number.
Yeah.
It's certainly a unique topic, but it's, it's, it's not the way we've done things in the past in terms of, you know, being able to explain, you know, and answer questions about what will you do with the money? You know, we can, if we could break it into chunks that we're all comfortable with and can, you know, speak to where those numbers come from, that would be great, such as locks and...
You know, it's a little bit of an extraordinary set of circumstances.
Absolutely.
You know, we have, we know some things we'd like to do probably pretty quickly, like locks.
Right.
You know, I guess we could come up with some sort of agreement with the Board of Finance, that we'd come back with a plan, but that we'd like to put a placeholder in, you know, and ask for their approval on a specific set of, I don't know, I just don't want to end up with a, with a plan that we have no way of implementing.
Understood.
We'd have to go through, in Mike's scenario, we'd have to put a plan together and probably call for either a special election, or there's an election in November.
Right.
There's a vote in November. We're not likely to make the May vote.
No. We're not making the May vote, so it would have to be a special...
Would have to be the November vote, which means you actually wouldn't start working until sometime after that.
Depending on the scope of it, right?
That's right.
Well, how much is the... I mean, because I kind of agree with the balance that's coming out here, which is, you know, to Mike's point, you don't want to put something in that's so general that we really can't speak to it with some degree of articulation. So we're either in a position of identifying the likely things that would be coming out of an audit and trying to put some costs around them, or we're waiting until the audit's completed. So, you know, my question is, is the list of 5 to 10 key projects that we might work on, that universe, do we generally know it now and it's going to be refined with the audit, or is it a complete blind spot right now, and we really are dependent upon the audit for some insights? Okay, I think that's going to...
You know, based on the feedback we got, I think, from the symposium, the locks are a certain direction, and I think we all feel based on feedback that we've had that we need to go in as soon as possible, and we have pretty hard numbers on that. Beyond that, because of the measures that are pretty progressive comparable to other districts that we have in place in terms of video surveillance, lockdown already on the front, I think the question's become more of an expert, you know, view of layout of buildings, hardening of buildings, some of the things that you've read about that we would really need some guidance on in terms of, are those best practice and what are the associated costs with? I wouldn't feel comfortable just putting that out there. Certainly, there are other things, smaller-scale things, some fencing, gates that people have brought to our attention that I think are very good ideas, that we could put some numbers to rather quickly, that would really show a visual difference to some of the sites and add, certainly add value. But, you know, and then the personnel question that we talked briefly about tonight, certainly we would seek input on and a lot of conversation before we would make any recommendations. So I mean... Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
You know, a next step could be, we meet regularly with the First Elections Office on this to go back and kind of vet this conversation a little bit about the best way to move forward from a planning standpoint, because we do have things that are in the scope here that you don't necessarily want to start trading one for the other. You know, when you look at the placeholder we have right now of 900,000 and trade that off for a security measure, and then we're in a really deep trouble situation at Squadron with the Boiler Project, for example. I think that's dangerous practice to get into.
Might make sense to have that conversation with the Board of Finance, to have a conversation about it, you know, and see how they feel about it. In a way, we should be collaborating with them.
Yep.
Absolutely.
I agree with that. I mean, because to where you're going, I think, is even just the locks, and if your number is a good proxy for the locks...
Right.
You're going to blow up this year's capital project number right before you start. So if it's going to start with that, that you're blowing this up, it probably makes sense to sit them down and say, you know, even if you sequence it, you're still going to have these certain significant outlays, which I'll call off this schedule, and maybe that's the way to handle it, because the time is right, if it were, to do this.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so we'll initiate those conversations.
You know, I do think some of this stuff is fairly important, because if we get a report from the audit that says that we should be making improvements to the entrances, for example, of our school buildings, I would like to see us be in a position that we could do that over the summer.
Right.
You know, that kind of construction has to be done over the summer, pretty much.
And I'll say this...
Locks, I think we can probably do on a rolling basis while we're operating, but...
And I've had conversations, as Bert has, with some members of the Board of Finance, and they, I think, are expecting us to come to them with questions and conversations and want us to know that they want to engage in those conversations. So I think it makes complete sense to come out of this meeting and engage all those parties in the conversation. So we'll definitely do that.
And I think in order to even follow up with you, Mikey, on your question, I think off the books, I mean, off there and following up on yours, this is going to be a continual, it's not just a...
Oh, yeah.
A continual off the books for the next few years, or off the record for the next...
Off this...
Right, off the grid, on the books.
And on the record, too.
Thank you.
Want to make sure that's out there.
So... Because, you know, this has been on... Many of these have been on here for quite some time.
And honestly, the Squadron Line number has not moved. That's been a placeholder. I was never involved with the scope of work, the design, so I mean, there's a good...
That would definitely need work and refinement, absolutely.
Needing to pull it, pull it together to a higher, higher level of detail.
Okay.
All righty.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, again. A lot of great work in a short period of time.
To continue forward. All righty. We are now on to Exhibit 7 and 2013, 2014 Budget.
Right. What? Okay. All right. So there is a copy of this. I know you have it downloaded on your netbook, but in the budget binder that Bert handed out as well. So what I have this evening is a presentation or a budget overview. This isn't the presentation of the superintendent's budget, but really an overview of some of the parameters leading up to the overall presentation that will take place in mid-February. So I'm going to work through this, and hopefully we get some feedback, and it gives us an idea of some of the, both the challenges and planning that we're thinking about as we move forward into the budget year. So I have divided this really into three pieces. One is the budget context, and really an effort to talk about some of the challenges and the pressures that we face, and what are certainly some complex financial times as we plan to improve our school system. The second section is a return on investment as part of our continuous improvement culture in Simsbury. How do we perform at the end of each year, and what do we look at in terms of looking at our overall value as a school district? I think it's always important to assess each time we move into budget development. And then some of the key drivers, both from a planning standpoint, a programmatic standpoint, and a fiscal standpoint as we move forward into 13, 14. So when we got together with the team and started talking about really framing the budget for this year, we really looked at it as a problem of practice, and I think we've had a lot of conversations early on here in the year with the Board of Education about the educational reform efforts and some of the ways in which we need to respond to those locally to set our students up for success and set our teachers up for success. So the way we frame this context is how we respond to educational reform while having that strong desire to both preserve and improve our quality school district in what our difficulty economic times. So certainly a complex soup, so to speak, and a complex mix that we're faced with. The other piece of the context within Simsbury here is that we're a desirable community that requires and has high expectations for our school system, and we need to plan accordingly to those expectations as we move forward. This next slide grew really out of a conversation that we had at the board table about thinking of budget planning in terms of what we termed, I think it was you, Mike, that talked about the term of, you know, we need to respond to both the downward and upward pressures in an effort to move forward a responsible budget number. So downward pressures that we certainly need to think about and consider responsibly are our enrollment. We have a declining enrollment that we'll talk about a little bit later on in this presentation, and we can responsibly reduce some FTE along with that enrollment decline without impacting program negatively, and I think we need to continue to do that. I mean, that's an important piece in creating a competitive budget number to move forward. The second is the awareness of the economic climate and where we are, and that things have not yet rebounded to the level that we hope they would. And we're faced with those upward pressures as well in terms of organizationally, how we plan and move forward with the mandates that I spoke of, responsiveness to special education, needs and programming. Special education represents nearly 20% of our budget, and we need to be thoughtful about how we plan and respond to the needs of those students as well as all of our students. We read often and talk at the board table about innovations in technology that are forcing us to think differently, not only about how we deliver instruction, but how students learn as well. So that's another upward pressure that we've listed. We always align our initiatives with our district vision and core beliefs, and this budget moving forward will be no different than that. It's important to consider the 21st century curriculum, and the common core mandates certainly align with that. High-quality staff, we took that from the vision and core belief, and how important it is to provide the professional development and really get the right people on the bus. We've talked about that, and create an organizational culture of excellence, and create ready access for technology for both our teachers and our students. Little snapshot of going back to 2005, 2006 of what the percent of budget increase has been. I needed to move beyond a little bit of the scope of the last four years because it was becoming the new normal, just to remember that at one time we did have budget scenarios that looked differently, but what you certainly see there in this representation is how challenging things have been since the 2009, 10 year when we move forward the budget, and we understand we still have those pressures with us now. We've talked quite a bit this year about enrollment, the decline in enrollment, and the work we're doing in the district to address that. We see that we've had a five-year decline in enrollment of 406 students and 519 district-wide, almost a 10% decline in our overall enrollment. And during that time, we've also made reductions of close to 45 full-time equivalent positions. So that's that responsiveness to the decline in enrollment that I think will be important as we continue to move forward. We did want to touch on briefly some of the cost savings and program improvement efforts that we've been involved with in the past several years, and we'll continue to keep our eye on as we move our planning forward. One is the Simsbury Reading Intervention Program, which we did a detailed presentation on earlier in the year, and is a program that we seek to expand in our budget proposal as we continue to develop that, our facilities and enrollment study, which now we are in a position in short order to report back to the Facilities and Enrollment Committee on what removal of modular costs will look like and a detailed three-year plan on that, and we'll come back and report that to the Board of Education. And I think we will see some long-term savings, short-term costs, but long-term savings from the removal of those modular units over time. The Technology Advisory Committee, ongoing efforts of what we're going to do with technology and the vision of technology in this district will be incredibly important, and will have an impact on future budgets as we move forward. There's a list that has been compiled, Bert compiled a list, of what are really collaborative cost-saving efforts that will, is available on our website. We continue to update just a couple of the recent things that we've worked on with the town, a selection of financial advisor for the pension investments, also the actuarial review. So that type of work, we're consistently combining efforts with the town and keeping collaboration open to try to save dollars wherever we can. The next section is the return on investment, which really taking a brief look, and I'll certainly expand on this more when I do the formal presentation on the budget, but some of our accomplishments as a district that we are proud of. You know, the new state accountability index, we talked to the Board of Ed about that earlier in the year, the new way that they are going to rate schools in the state from an accountability standpoint, and that Tariffill and Henry James Middle School were both honored as schools of distinction, which puts them in the top 10% of schools across the state of Connecticut. Simsbury High School with that same index was ranked number five in the state of Connecticut, and the only Derg B school in the top five. So both from a cost standpoint, from accomplishment standpoint, comparative standpoint, I think nice accomplishments to think about when we look at our school district. So we have some bullets about traditional test performance, but also about the quality of our athletic program, the quality of our comprehensive offerings at the high school with our biomedical offerings or engineering offerings, the growth of our fine arts programs. So really well-rounded program improvements over the course of the past several years, record participation in advanced placement, and how kids are performing on advanced placement. So as we continue to open up opportunities for our great students, they continue to rise to the occasion. So just to bring attention to a few of those important bullets. The per pupil expenditure cost is always something that we take a look at on an annual basis when we benchmark ourselves against other districts, and here you can see how Simsbury ranks against Connecticut towns, against towns in the Hartford area, and against towns in the Derg. You take a look and you see we're about 2% less than other towns in our Derg, considerably less than the state. So that's a marker we continue to keep our eye on, as I think it's a good comparative measure, and I'll have some other information as to how that compares from an achievement standpoint in the budget presentation, but wanted to share this initial information with you. These numbers continue to get refined by the state, so we do have a little footnote there that if they are changed at any point in this process, we'll come out and put the new numbers on. But the next chart, what I was just looking to bring that data to life a little bit, in that if you take the difference in the average Derg B per pupil cost and Simsbury's per pupil cost, it's a little over $300, which doesn't seem like a lot, until you multiply that by the total number of students we have, and you see that it has a potential impact to the budget of over $1 million, $1.5 million. So I think when you start looking at this data and seeing how we perform overall as a district and the quality of our programs relative to the cost, that's the frame we're getting at when we talk about return on investment and trying to draw some positive attention to that. The last section are the drivers, and some themes on the first page is really, I've talked about already a little bit, but is that this budget will demonstrate some responsible reduction of classroom FTE as a result of the decline in enrollment, but will stay within the Board of Education guidelines for class size, which has been extremely important feedback we've received from the board in the time that I've been in the district and that our parent community has talked about as well. We'll continue to align our resource allocation with our Board of Education goals. We'll leverage the use of technology in classroom instruction, and we'll also look to plan in how we can respond effectively in supporting student needs and teachers' needs in lieu of all the reform efforts with not only curriculum, but as we talked about before, teacher and administrative evaluation. So really a wide scope of reform efforts and challenges that we're faced with as a district right now. The next page really starts to bring some shape to where we are relative to financial knowns.